To the rapport, not to bring it away from city or town government, but in my role at the Y, as the executive director of Y, we went through a strategic planning process that I was very involved in. And the strategic plan that we ultimately, the board and staff put together, was such a useful goal for that Y. Salem Y is an old urban, smaller, smaller type of Y, and it's sandwiched between two state-of-the-art, very large Ys. So we couldn't compete with those. So we really put a strategic plan together that focused on the needs of the community and the needs of the Y, and everything we did operationally, I made sure tied back to the goals of the strategic plan in each category. And by doing so, we achieved a lot of really great stuff. And not only did it work from a mission standpoint, but it worked financially as well. And it really helped bring that Y closer to financial viability than it was before.
Did you ever find a time when the strategic plan that had been developed for you, because presumably there's a group that's working on it as opposed to just you individually, or the mayor, or in your role as city council, where that strategic plan differed from the plan that you would have preferred? And if so, how did you address that and go about implementing?
So that happens all the time in government. I can't think of like a specific time during the strategic planning process that that happened, or even like a master planning or quarter planning process. I'm trying to think, maybe in my role in -- yeah. So as a city councillor, we went through a visioning process for our waterfront, which, in my opinion, is very underutilized. And on it, we owned a former McDonald's that has been sitting there vacant for 20 years, and we've done nothing with it. And there are a variety of reasons for that. I don't, I'm not going to get into that. But, so we went through what I thought was a pretty thoughtful process around, okay, what do we want this property? Not just this property, but the expand to the waterfront to look like. And the outcome was not what I would have hoped. It was, I thought it was good, but it's, for me, it wasn't perfect. But it was a consensus. I mean, what's, I like the saying, don't let the, let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I think that was the case, and a lot of, a lot of times in government, that's the case. I think that what came out was good. It wasn't perfect, in my opinion, and if it were up to me, it would have been different. But it was a great step in the, in the right direction. And it was an important step in the right direction. And it wouldn't have been right at that moment in time to, to, you know, stomp my feet and bang my fist about what I thought was right. I expressed it during the process, but ultimately, the process, the recommendations were slightly different. And that's okay. That's okay. And I think also, in a position like that, I think it's really important, when you disagree, to be mindful of the fact that there are going to be, there's the next thing, the next thing, the next thing that you're going to have to work with these people around the table on. And so to do so in a respectful manner that allows you to disagree and express your concerns, but also work with, work with them on the, you know, next five things, I think that's an important part of that process as well.
Chris, quick question, if you wouldn't mind, just going back, or in reading through, it may, if the board allows, maybe Jason could answer it at question six. It's about his comments on potential for the town that he saw as he's going through it. So I'd be interested to hear more about that. But I'd like to get the, I think it ties in, maybe nice to number six, but maybe, I'm fine with waiting till six to ask my question, but I just wanted to.
You want to take that one, or if you wish?
No, it's okay. We can go on through, but just in six, I'll ask that, and it'll be a reference.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
So, just to be question six, and then put you out of the.
So, question number six is, what is your experience with economic development? And describe for us the most important planning initiative that you've participated in over the course of your career. What was your role in the planning process? And can you describe any keys to success? And my follow-on to that will be about potential, but I'll let you answer the question.
So my role in, so we were fortunate in Salem and in Beverly to have a, more so in Salem, but even in Beverly, a pretty capable and robust planning and economic development departments. So, so that was great, working in conjunction with them. I, in my roles, in both roles, I was very involved in many economic development projects and initiatives, from rezoning proposals to specific development proposals, to, trying to think, like even, I would consider like complete streets and those initiatives to be related to the economic development of cities and towns. So, in that way, right involved in those. I think the most, the one initiative that comes to mind, that was probably, the one that I learned the most about, was a project in Salem where we were trying to construct a new senior center, which was part of a private development. So it was an affordable housing development that, I think I mentioned this in my initial interview too, but it was a private, nonprofit development that would have had affordable housing. And then, on the first floor, was a planned, active street scape on the first floor. And so initially, they were talking retail, et cetera. And the city had been without a new senior center for a long, long time. And this was probably, I think it was like nine months into the mayor's term. And we realized that the site on the first floor, the building, was about the square footage needed for a new senior center. Community life center is what we, what the city called it. And so, that was kind of an exciting project, we thought, a public-private partnership, one that would address a real need in the community, and not to mention, it was adjacent to, you know, they call, it's called the Point Neighborhood in the city of Salem, which is about a five or six block neighborhood that is largely immigrant, largely Spanish-speaking. And would have been a nice revitalization, kind of cornerstone for that area of the city as well. And so, we worked hard for that project. Ultimately, the vote was less about, the council vote was less about an, an economic development or zoning issue, but more about funding the project. And we needed a bond authorization to fund the project. And ultimately, after about a year and a half long process, ultimately, the council did not approve the bond authorization. And so the project went forward, it's there now, but without the senior center. It's an affordable housing project with retail space on the first floor. I believe it's all vacant at this moment. It's probably been five years. And, and the city is right now, after, this was 12 years ago, about, maybe 11 years ago, is just now building a senior center. So, it was a tough project, and it was, you know, everything from working in educating the public, working in educating the council, trying to work to get enough votes on the council, to making the case for that type of development on that site, and why it was important to the city, why it was important to the neighbors, why it was important to the seniors, and working with the developer on, on those things. So, so I think that was probably the longest, most significant project I worked on. Fortunately, it didn't work out the way I had hoped. But, but there are other, I mean, like I was mentioning, downtown in Salem, it's a huge focus when I first started, and still is. And, you know, not only in terms of development, but making sure that the city had, and we, and the city was investing in appropriate marketing and promotions for the city, making sure the city had a healthy Main Streets program that could help with organizing events, organizing festivals. They just had the Salem Arts Festival last, this past weekend, things like that, that draw a lot of people to town to support the business community. So, there's a lot of things like that, that I had worked on and was involved in as well. It's funny, because in communities, you kind of, there are several ways that you can go about looking at revitalizing areas, revitalizing specifically downtown. And, you know, in Salem and in Beverly, there was a lot of focus on new residential units, building new residential units to create a base for business community in downtown. And Beverly's still going through that process. Salem's, I think, done a good job in that way. And Beverly's, I think, close to, close to where they need to be. But, but it really depends on the community. I mean, that's right, that was right for Beverly and Salem, but that's not to say, you know, that's right for a community like Maynard. So, one of the things that I've been involved in that was really successful, and I mentioned it earlier, was the creation of an arts district through the cultural council. And we did that in Beverly. And what that did, it really gave us an excuse to just go nuts when it turned, in terms of arts and culture and music. And there was, there's just this real focus on, we're going through a process now in Beverly to update the downtown vision. And it's, arts and culture is a cornerstone for the downtown revitalization in Beverly. And in a way that we're using it to attract people, to get people's interest, from murals to, there was a commitment from the city to revitalize an old theater, which is up and running and going, going great. We have Montserrat College of Art, which is a block away from downtown, which has gallery space and has produced students that, and graduates that have invested back in downtown to have their own gallery space, et cetera. So, so I think, I mean, just based on, look, I'm no expert in Maynard. I mean, I'm still learning about Maynard. You're the experts, and they're the experts. So I'd, you know, in terms of potential, I'd really want to hear from a lot of people to determine that. But based on my, my initial view, I really, it seems like that's really an area of potential that people are really kind of bought into already. And so growing that, I think, could be kind of an exciting, exciting effort.
Thank you.
I have a quick follow-up on economic development. And the projects that you've done for Salem and Beverly, did you ever have any maybe issues between the balance and the need for the development and the new revenue sources, and then the communities that were resistant to that development? And if so, how did you handle that?
Yeah, there's a lot of that, because you're balancing the need for growth in order to make ends meet. You're balancing making sure you're preserving the character of the community. And like I said, I mean, I do view economic development as, it should be, at least at the vision stage, should be a ground-up conversation. So that's really hard. I wish I had like a magic, magic wand to answer that question, because it's everywhere, right? Every community deals with that. And, and I think that's why the process you're going through right now with the master plan is probably really important, because I think if you can build consensus in a process like that, and you can really identify areas where people are open to growth, I think that's, that's the way to do it, right? And really, not only open to growth, but identify what type of growth you want, and to really build that consensus. I think that's how you do it. And, and again, if you use whatever the results of that process is as a guide to accomplish the growth that you want, that's, that's how to do it. And again, my approach is really collaborative, and open, and transparent, and kind of proactively try to engage the community. And I think that, in the most part, upfront, it makes things sometimes harder, right? The process to open it up and get feedback and try to incorporate it all into whatever you're trying to accomplish, that leading up is, can be difficult and frustrating for everyone involved. But ultimately, I think the results of that type of process are worth the work and effort. So I, I think that's the way to do it. How do you deal with it when it's happening, that, that tension? I think you try to educate people on why growth is important. I think most communities have done that, or tried to do that. And like I said, sometimes you disagree. I mean, sometimes you legitimately disagree on issues. And that's okay. That's okay in government. I think that's healthy. I mean, if you don't disagree, you're lying, I think. I mean, you're never going to agree with someone 100% of the time. So, I think, working with people, even when you disagree, to try to build consensus, and if you can't build consensus, agreeing to disagree, and getting through the issue, and then working on the next one, I think that's the, that's the approach you need to take.
There's a natural tension between owning the day-to-day operations of the town as a town administrator, and deferring to the priorities, guidance, and direction of the board of selectmen. Please tell us how we'd approach this, you would approach this, and provide any examples you can of how you've navigated a similar dynamic in the past.
I view the relationship as a partnership, and I understand that, like I said, you're never going to see eye to eye with everybody every time, all the time. But I view it as a partnership, and I think that in order to be strong partners and collaborate on issues, I think there needs to be strong relationships, and you need to work at that. You need to build a infrastructure communication, where there's routine communication, several avenues and different ways, and try to be on the same page to the extent you can. I understand the role, that it's responsible for the day-to-day operations of the town, and to do my best to implement the vision and the priorities and goals of the board. And I would, I would do my best to do that. I wouldn't, if I had a differing, I will say this, if I had a difference of opinion, I'd share it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree just because you had an opinion. I think that's healthy. I think that's part of the, part of the process. I wouldn't take it personal if you ultimately disagreed with me. And I, but I think that's, I think that's the nature of government. That's what makes it fun, is arguing a case, sometimes winning, sometimes losing. But, but understanding that everyone involved is trying to do what's best for the town. And if you kind of come from that perspective, I think it's okay. It was a constant, I constantly was in this position with the city of Salem, and in this position with the city of Beverly as well, on both, both sides. There were times when I disagreed with the mayor in Beverly. I was upfront, always upfront and honest with him. I always communicated with him. I always communicated with him on that particular issue if I did disagree. I communicated with him before the cameras were on to know that, where I stood on the issue, I think that's important, to be upfront and honest with whoever you're working with. And and when I thought it was important enough to make my case on the council floor, I would tell him that I was gonna do that. And we have a great relationship to this day. And I think the reason is because I was, I approached it that way, and he appreciated that. And and I will say, there were, I probably voiced my opinion probably more than some others on the council. So I wouldn't blame him if he was frustrated with me. But but we maintained a really positive working relationship even when we disagreed. And the same thing can be said in my role in Salem. I worked, I was the liaison between the mayor's office and the city council in Salem. And I approached it the same way. We, if I knew a counselor had an issue, I'd call and talk to him or her. And sometimes conversation went well, sometimes it didn't. But but I always tried to maintain a relationship so that when the next issue came up, I could pick up the phone and talk to the counselor. And I've had great luck in dealing with with issues like that, so. And I think if you talk to my former colleagues on the Beverly Council and former counselors in Salem, I think they would, they would agree with that.
Okay. It's kind of a follow-up, but since you brought it up a couple of times in the last answer to that question, I'm gonna skip out to number 11, so you guys can follow along. And it says, number 11 reads that there's improved communication with the board of selectmen. Multiple department heads and the citizens of Maynard in general have been a priority at the board of selectmen's annual goal-setting meetings for the past few years. If you saw communications as a shortcoming, how would you improve the same?
You, like I said, you build an infrastructure to make sure you're communicating. You, and people communicate differently. So making sure that you're communicating with people in an effective way is important, too. Some people like face-to-face meetings, some people are okay with shooting an email out, some people want a phone call, whatever that may be. I think it's important to understand that. Did you say specific to your goal-setting?
No, 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 just, so in general, improved communication is, has been a subject that we've brought up among ourselves in our goal-setting meeting with the former TA and ESS TA and others that we have every year by per charter. So it's just a, you know, if you came in and noticed that that was a problem, how would you resolve that problem?
So first starts, I was, first starts with you, making sure there's good communication between you and me. And like I said, depending on how you want to communicate, that's how I communicate. I want that to be regular and routine. But I also think, as I've stated in some of my other answers, I do think that being proactive in communication with the public is really important. And I think that sometimes in local government, we have this big initiative, we hold a public meeting, there's 10 people that show up and we think we've done our job, and I just disagree with that. I don't, I don't think that because you hold a public meeting and you have 10 people in the room, that's not a public process, in my opinion. You've only reached 10 people and you gotta do better than that. And so how do you go about doing better than that? And sometimes it's going into neighborhoods, sometimes it's, I know a lot of communities are doing surveys now to get, to get feedback from residents. And that's, I've found, I've been involved in them, I found to be a pretty good, pretty good way. I mean, social media, it's a big thing, right? I mean, people are, people get their news on social media more than anything right now. So making sure that there's a, it seems like there is a social media presence, but making sure there is an active and engaged social media presence. But but I think just finding methods to get appropriate public input in making sure that people understand and are educated on what's happening in town. And however, whatever the means are that we would need to do that, we need to be committed to do that. And and I used, I gave some examples, but maybe there are other better examples that the town could look at. But I think to be an effective government and to be a government that reflects the interest of your residents and constituents, that's gotta be a cornerstone of what you do. And and so it's gotta be, I think, a major focus for any leader in a position like this.
Relative to social media, and especially in a town the size of Maynard, 10,000 residents, news, you know, your neighbor knows what you've done before you've done it, you know, that type of thing. It's, so it's, it's difficult to control at times, I'll use the fake news. What are your thoughts on how a community or a leader of a community can go about controlling that type of information so that before, you know, because the wave goes before you've even started to swim, if you know what I mean? The wave's past you, and you've already lost your argument. What are some of your thoughts about how a community can work towards controlling the message?
Good question, really good question. And I don't know if I have a great answer for that. I think that, I think that, one, if you're gonna do it, you need to be committed to do it. And I think you need to be focused on making sure that when there is news that needs to be known or should be known by the, by residents, that it gets out there as soon as possible. I know that there are times when the back and forth of social media can be more of a nuisance and a headache than than useful tool to a town government. And that's the nature of the beast with social media. So I don't know that you engage in the back and forth, but I still think it's the responsibility, especially now with so many people using it and getting their information on it. I still think it's a responsibility of the town to get the information out that way. Controlling the message, it's hard, it's hard, though. And again, getting into a back and forth, that's a full-time job sometimes, right? I mean, you can't, you just can't. So making sure that you're using it appropriately to educate, to make sure that people know what's going on, I think is the key. And then, you know, the rest of it is use of good judgment, I guess.
I got a quick follow-up on communication. So you give really good answers on the, you know, what I would call transparency to the public of the community. What about internally? You inherit department heads, you inherit communication streams that may be honest, transparent as they need to be. I know you have experience with dealing with, you know, municipalities as part of director of operations. How do you deal with the communication stream and making sure that employees in each department know what's expected of them, know what's actually happening? And follow-up to go on that, how do you counsel or coach your department heads to make sure that they're following proper documentation procedures to be transparent?
Thank you for that question. I'm sorry I neglected to mention that, that's a really important piece, obviously. So, again, I think regular and frequent communication is key. So I had regular staff meetings, I had regular senior staff meetings, I had regular individual meetings with certain department heads as they were needed. And and in addition, I don't know if there's a budget question, but can I get into budget a little bit?
We can, we can. You can go wherever you want.
So I think budget, I, I think the budget is a really important piece of regular communication. So so during, during the budget process, which I think is a year, it just never ends, managing the, managing the budget is not only making sure that the numbers add up, but also making sure that whatever the goals, whatever the priorities are that have been identified for that department, which should be done through the budget process, are being, we're building to reach those. So so I think that, and I'm not sure if this, how it's done now, but having a very open and collaborative budget process and then following that budget throughout the fiscal year to make sure that, first, the numbers are good. But second, that that whatever we said we wanted to do this fiscal year, whatever we said we wanted to accomplish, we're moving towards that always throughout the year. And so I very much have an open, open-door policy. So if there's a, if there's a staff member with a concern, open-door policy all the time. But also to have those regular check-ins that happen routinely. And also when there are big projects happening, a big, or a big initiative, a great news, that that's being shared, probably just through an email, communication with staff, just so they're aware of what's going on. In my prior, one of my prior lives, I, for the council, I used to put together, like, with the mayor, used to put together a very informal memo that basically was like, hey, this is what happened this month. And it was just this project, here's a brief description, this project, here's a brief description. This, we received this award, we got this grant, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, probably half of them read it, but it was a really good way to keep people informed. We used to share it as well with department heads, so they were aware of what was going on. But even just getting people together so they could talk to people at staff meetings, so people have a true appreciation of what other departments are doing and what they're accomplishing is really important. In the past and currently, I have regular staff meetings. We have, it's gonna sound probably a little corny, but it's okay. We have about half of our, so they're about an hour, they usually go a little longer, but about half the meeting is just what you'd expect. Regular updates, what, are we coming on any deadlines? Do you need assistance with anything, et cetera? In the last half, our, we do like these team-building exercises. So we, you know, I have them present on their favorite leader. I had, we did a personality test so that people could understand where we're coming from, and we talked about that. Last week, we watched a TED Talk on leadership, and then we talked about it. And those things sound, you know, when I first started doing them, my staff thought I was crazy, that, you know, I got the eye roll, like, oh, okay, I have better things to do, I, I'm busy. I don't have time for this. But I'm telling you, it's super effective, it builds relationships amongst the staff. It brings, it builds the type of culture that you, that you want and you're looking for, a real kind of collaborative, team-oriented group. And people really appreciate it now, even though, you know, every once in a while, you still get the eye roll. It's, it's a really good and effective way to not only communicate, but at the same time really build the type of work environment and atmosphere that we want.
All right, Shaw, you can ask the budget questions.
Oh, exciting. How did I get that reputation?
Since you asked about the budget.
Right. So Maynard as a community has an admittedly high tax base, and our size limits our new growth potential. These factors, as well as the constant reduction in state funding, contribute to an annual struggle to retain full services while balancing our budget. What financial strategies would you employ to retain high service levels while maintaining a balanced budget?
Yeah, that's, I would be like a millionaire.
We're gonna put it right into a fact.
Happy US about the budget now?
They're gonna be here if I had that answer? No, I'm just kidding. I think that that is a struggle that everyone goes through, right? And how do you, how do you, there's low rev, there's not enough revenue and there's a higher demand on services that people expect. So how do you, how do you make it work? And you make it work through, I think, financial discipline is one. There are times when you make tough choices. Again, I think it's a close working relationship with the finance committee, with the board, with staff. I used to have, not, the mayor used to have retreats, budget retreats with the city council, department heads, to talk about these things, to say, okay, there's only a certain amount of money on this pot, what are our priorities? Can we come up with some shared ways to prioritize where we want this money spent? In the most efficient way possible. And I thought that was an effective way. But managing, actively rolling up your sleeves and managing the finances is important. And I think that's part of it as well. And it's easy to say this, but creativity is important in this, too, and being willing to sometimes think out of the box. And I've been through processes that we've done that and have not worked. And then I've been through processes that we've done that, and it has, has worked. It's not easy. You know, things like looking at services and how they're delivered, and, you know. We, I've been involved with privatization of services, I've been involved with changing, expanding contracts, I've been involved in consolidations, consolidation of certain functions, consolidation of certain departments. I've been involved in collaborations amongst communities, looking at regionalization. And so those things are, they're easier said than done, without a doubt. But again, it's healthy to have those conversations and to really take hard looks at those. And and I think sometimes there are legitimate ways you can implement some of that stuff. Sometimes there aren't. And so I spend a lot of time in Salem looking at ways to do things differently, and are there ways to do things differently in the, in certain departments, in Park and Rec and DPW? And and there were, and there are, and it's a matter of whether or not, I mean, sometimes you can find a way to do things differently. You're looking at it and say, wow, I can provide this service at a low cost by doing X, Y, and Z. But then you realize, I'm never going to be able to get that done, you know, for whatever reason. And so sometimes it's maybe not worth, or you can't pursue. But but I think it's worth going through that process. And again, it shouldn't be done in a vacuum, it should be done with people at the table having a conversation about it. But yeah.
Can I, sorry for interrupting. Relative to the budget, the development of the budget, one piece that was missing that I didn't hear at all was school. And when you have the municipal side and you can give up the school side, can you talk about a little bit of the experience that you've had in that realm relative to the school versus the town? And how you sort of make that battle work so that it works on behalf of the entire community?
I hate that battle, I don't understand the battle, I really don't. It's one pot of money and you prioritize it based on how you want to spend it. I don't, I really never understood the battle. It exists, you're absolutely right, I don't get it. Education in most communities are a priority, they have, generally speaking, half the budget. And and I don't understand.
I'm sorry, did you say, what did you say? Did you say half the budget? No, I just want to make sure.
I did say, sorry. And so, but but it's based on what the community and the board see as priorities. And I've never, if anything, I've been in positions that have advocated for funding, not fought against funding. And I think, I think it's one pot of money that we have to spend. And I think it's really important to have a strong relationship with the school side and the city side, and making those decisions together with the understanding that I think communities, generally speaking, want the best, to provide the best education possible.
Is there any stage in the process that you think the schools become involved versus not being involved in developing your budget?
I, you mean, what do you mean?
From day, from day one, are you including the schools?
Oh, certainly, certainly, 100%, absolutely. I mean, I would, I would absolutely have the schools involved. I would, they would be active participants, they would be, I would hope, be, you know, part of regular meetings that I have and.
I ask that because you do, in order to avoid a surprise at the time of a budget reveal that the schools haven't been aware of or claim not to have been aware of, that your approach, I want to make sure that your approach would be one that is inclusive from the outset.
Absolutely, absolutely, I'm sorry I didn't say that, absolutely, absolutely.
One follow-up to that.
That's been my experience.
Okay, I'm sorry, good. One follow-up to that, do you have an example of how, as a chief of staff, you would advise the mayor on how the mayor would interact with the school department? Is, was there, like, how did the mayor, as chief of staff, I'm assuming you had a lot of input into strategy, and, you know, vetting, you know, what you're gonna say. What's your interaction and your experience with actually dealing with the school department? I imagine it's quite a bit larger than our school system here. And the interaction's probably a little different, it's a city versus a town.
So the mayor in Salem is the president, the chair of the school committee. And so she was hands-on chairing.
Is she always the chair? So the mayor is always the chair of the school?
She's the chair of the school committee, yep. And so in that way, obviously, she was very involved, hands-on involved in the schools. But we had regular interaction with the superintendent, I mean, we had regular meetings with, at the time. It's a woman now, but it was a male when I was there. And, yeah, I mean, it wasn't, it was treated similar to any other major department head within the city. Obviously, with a more significant-sized budget and a very significant purpose. But very, establishing a strong working relationship on the outside is key. And respecting each other's responsibilities and job. And, but trying to be inclusive, is the word, with the schools, I think, is, I didn't mention it because I think it's, I think in my head, I just think that's the way it should go, and that's a part of, I kind of include the schools in just the normal interaction of.
I wasn't being critical of it.
No, 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 I, no, I, I'm sorry, I didn't take it that way. But yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's important to have a collaborative relationship with the schools, obviously.
So if I may, just for the board, kind of doing a time check and against the questions. I know, Mr. Chair, if you want to kind of prioritize the questions we have remaining to leave for time for closing.
Right, I would, so question five, you don't have to answer it, because in David's follow-up and Terrence's follow-up, it was more or less answered in its entirety. But I will leave the question, only because it will be in the record and it'll be part of the whole process. The question was, recently, the Board of Selectment unveiled a strategy for a more disciplined approach to budgeting and financial planning that would help us set aside money for capital projects, and which will require a higher degree of disciplinary strength in the face of budgetary needs and asks. Do you have thoughts on this proposed strategy? Some of the challenges the town might face maintaining the approach, and how we might navigate the process? And the B section of that same question was, who would you invite into the process, such as the schools and other departments seeking to obtain the same dollars? So that was kind of answered in the two follow-ups in the question, you know, and in your answer to number four, so.
Unless you have something to add to that.
Unless you want to add to that?
Real quick, just, I was very involved in my second role with the city in capital planning. And, what was I gonna say? It took me an hour to lose my train of thought. I had a, I had a good one, too. No, that's what I was gonna say, I read the finance committee recommendations for the town meeting. And so I saw some of the capital, their recommendations on capital, and the fact that, like a lot of communities, the tight finances are gonna, and a long-term strategy to funding those, and discipline to funding those is gonna be necessary. I think that's similar in almost every community. And I think, you know, capital planning, forecasting, and budget all have to go hand-in-hand to reach the appropriate discipline that would be necessary. That's it.
Okay, so at the end, I'll go back to it if we have time. But the question I had was the budget retreat, exactly what that is. But that's not important to these other issues, so we'll get back to that if we have to. And the next question that we asked, you kind of answered it before in the communication piece, and you discussed the open-door style and that type of thing. So the question is, more or less been answered in that respect. But could you describe for us your managerial style and your organizational strategy? Considering your response to these questions, what town government issues would you delegate into whom? And really, so the other ones, you've, the strategy and the managerial style piece, I think you've answered in previous questions, you know, by listening. So the point of that question now becomes, when there are certain things, what type of things, within the, you know, typical TA job, would you delegate into whom? Would you delegate them?
Well, that's, I mean, frankly, that's a hard question to ask without being in the job, I mean, to answer without being in the job. So to offer an honest answer, I don't know. But that would be part of kind of the three-month plan, right? Is to get to know people, to get to know how operations and services are being delivered, to get to know the staff, and to kind of make those decisions moving forward. I mean, I'm not someone who's gonna come in and just like, you know, turn the table over and say, okay, let's start new. I want to get in, get to know what's happening, and try to identify any ways that can be improved. But I want to, I'd certainly want to learn about what's happening before I made any decisions, like, who am I delegating what to?
With regard to that, do you have any experience with removing low performance or inadequate performance?
Improving it? What did you, removing?
Removing, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, yeah, so, yes, I do. It was, I, part of my second round in Salem. I worked on improving certain departments and implementing those improvements. And, you know, without getting into, I don't want to get into specifics on that.
No details needed.
But yeah, definitely, I mean, from my work as chief, to my work as executive director of the Y, to my work as the director of municipal, in all of those roles, I've had experience with kind of improving performance, identifying goals that the department and individuals, or we hoped would reach, and to have some accountability to those goals. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I've been involved in progressive discipline issues, et cetera, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is, does your work history contain any experience with the town meeting form of governments used in Maynard? So, just, you know, where, when, type of thing?
My work history does not, it's all city. So I've dealt with the city council, city council, mayor, former government.
Can I ask you, as a follow-up to that, just to talk a little bit about your thoughts about town meeting and your understanding of how it works, and the respect that you might have for the town meeting voters and the results of town meeting?
Long nights, is that?
On occasion, yes.
Is that a good description? So I, I mean, my understanding is that, yeah, it's a shorter period of time to deal with, but it's not dissimilar to what I've dealt with with city government, I don't think. We have, I think, more opportunities than not, than towns to, you know, to implement major initiatives, so. But, I mean, I've observed, I mean, we, my boss now represents two towns, so I have observed town meeting, but I haven't participated.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Collective bargaining agreements, do you have any prior experience with collective bargaining agreements? And if so, how do you perceive the relationship between labor and management? And how does that perception help to attain the best agreements for all parties?
So I have, so as I've kind of stated throughout, I have a lot of experience with staff management, staff leadership. I think I mentor staff well. And I think I create an atmosphere where people want to be at work and want to succeed at work, which I think are my strengths. In my role in Salem, I, the mayor was at the table. So I don't have experience at the table negotiating contracts. Although I do, you know, I've supported those negotiations in the background. I have, I think my work on the backside of those, to make sure that they were positive working relationships, I think was an aid in negotiations. But in terms of actually negotiating contract at the table, I did, the boss took the leadership role in that.
So the part of the question that just kind of remains there is, how do you see the relationship between, you know, members of CBA and the management of a municipality or any other operation?
So it would be, it would be similar to some of the themes that I've already talked about. But I think that in order to negotiate in good faith, you need to be upfront and honest with the unions that you're negotiating with. And so I think sharing the information openly and honestly and transparently, and making sure that those unions understand that the community values their work and has a desire to compensate fairly. I think those are, you know, principles that are important. And, you know, there's no way around it, there will be times when those discussions are adversarial. And again, again, another theme of what I've said, I think that as long as it's respectful and honest and open, I think that even when it gets adversarial, I think that that's a part of the process, but one that you can get through with keeping those principles in mind.
How about in your career, do you have any experience obtaining grants from municipalities, either through the state or federal governments, or any other source for that matter?
Yep, so I have, I've been involved in applying for grants, managing grants. And so, yes, I have, and the projects that coincide with the funding. I've, in addition, my, bless you. In addition, right now in my role, I work with many of the agencies, the state agencies, that offer the grants. So I'm aware of a lot of the grants, now that maybe I've been educated on that in this role. And, you know, I knew a lot of them, but it has been an education on how many and how frequent grant opportunities come up. So that's, I think that would benefit me in any role I took on next.
Have you actually written grants, or you have?
I have, yep.
Okay, so we're done with most of that, unless anybody has any follow-up questions?
Any example of a specific grant that would stand out, that we should be aware of?
So I was, this was my second role in Salem. I, let me see, playground projects, historic preservation projects.
Any fire station grants?
Not sure, no. It looks historic, though. Maybe there's a historic.
That's one word for it.
Historic preservation grant we can grab. So, yeah, yeah, I have, I have written grants.
Kind of towards wrapping things up a little bit. Tell us one thing about yourself that we would not know by reading your resume, or taking part in this interview, kind of like a Google fact type of thing, if you lack of a better term.
Oh, this is fun.
Who was that?
Jeez, what can I?
And if you're trapped on a deserted island, what would you bring with you?
It's hysterical. Jeez, I love basketball, my favorite movie is Mary Poppins. Yeah, I love the Celtics, I'm a huge hoop fan, I love Marcus Smart. I don't know, is that, is that good?
There's not a wrong answer to this one.
There's no wrong answer, it's just, you know.
I have three kids, I have three boys that drive me crazy all the time.
Truth be told, I stole that out of the police department's interview.
I like that one.
For new office candidates or police candidates, so that was kind of.
I like that.
We heard some funny answers, so I thought we'd steal it. So, close it up, you know, in closing, you know, we'll take a couple minutes and make a statement, or, you know, for us, you know. It's a closing statement in regards to this interview and this position that remains open.
So I just want to thank you for the time, I really appreciate it. This is a fun process for me, and I really appreciate your consideration. I would love to get this job. I just think it's a great opportunity in a really kind of unique and exciting town. And so I just feel fortunate to be in front of you tonight. I feel fortunate for the opportunity to interview for the position, and pick me, it's easy. No, thank you very much, thank you, I appreciate it.
Happy to have you tonight, and I'm looking forward to talking to you in the future.
All right. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Wondering how you get back? Since you had a drive down.
Thank you very much.
So if anybody needs to take a break?
Now is your time?
Where are you going this week, please?
Well, I think that in every community I have ever worked in, people are concerned about the tax rate, so that is not at all a new problem. I think looking for new sources of revenue. I know that you are limited in size, but you do have some really unique opportunities that you can grow your commercial tax base. I think that you have a split tax rate here. I think that the board or the assessor would probably look at how that split is currently gen, what it's currently generating for income and see how much additional revenue is needed that we might be able to attract more commercial taxpayers, basically. I think that would be the number one strategy is to try to get more economic development into the community. You have a lot of great resources here, you have this building that is already built that can be populated with lots of different businesses, and I think that would be one of number one strategy. Of course, a number of other strategies could be employed, I think certainly looking at where the expenditures are, where is there any place that, you know, could be fine-tuned or cut for spending? Maybe there's duplicative effort that's going on in, in a number of areas, so are there places that, so I would look at where the places are to sort of cut spending if that's possible. But I think really trying to bring in new sources of revenue is probably the number one piece of the economic pie.
What would you see as your role as town administrator in working towards getting these businesses? You mentioned the mill a couple of times. What would you see as your role in trying to attract business to Maynard?
Well, I know you have an economic development committee and I'm sure they're really working hard to promote and to encourage business to come here. But I do have a lot of experience in economic development at the state level, certainly have a lot of folks that I'm still, you know, have relationships with. Mass Econ, I've been involved with them, certainly know how to, I don't know if you have CoStar here, but that would be something I would think about, you know, is there a way to make Maynard more visible? And when I was at the Metro West Chamber, I developed a program called Municipal Magnet to address this particular problem. So to get communities to really start to think like CEOs, and we would go through this process with the community to say, okay, where are your assets and where are your liabilities? You know, for you, I mean, you're not going to be purchasing any more land, you don't, you're not going to add 50 more acres to your town. So that would be seen as, you know, a sort of a hard and fast, you have this much space and that's it. And you have a lot of open space here, so that is really great because it's a great marketing tool. So I'd look at how do you market Maynard? What is being done currently? What could be better done to make sure that the right people, the commercial, you know, all of the commercial brokers, maybe do a fam tour, a familiarization tour, have them come in, see what you have available here and really try to get more and more interest from outside the region, outside the state, as well as within the state. I know that many towns offer tax-instrumental financing, that might be something you'd look at if you really wanted to attract a large-scale player. And this Municipal Magnet program that I've employed in other communities has really helped communities look at what they have in place that will attract business and what they need to do to make sure that business will come. So you're very close to a train station, you're probably, I don't know, eight or 10, not even, maybe eight minutes from the Acton train station. That's a real selling point for businesses who want to get their workers to come here. So those are the kinds of things I would take a look at, you know, to really try to promote economic development.
So recently, the Board of Selectmen unveiled a strategy for a more disciplined approach to budgeting and financial planning that would help us set aside money for capital projects and which will require a high degree of discipline and restraint in the face of budgetary needs and asks. Do you have thoughts on this proposed strategy? Some of the challenges the town, town might face in maintaining the approach and how you might navigate the process? There's a follow-up component to that around who might you invite into the process, such as the schools, other departments, et cetera?
As in many communities, I'm sure it's probably similar in Maynard, the school budget is a big portion of the overall budget for the town and is a big piece of that economic puzzle, right? How do you, how do you continue to fund your excellent school system? How do you continue to offer superior police and fire? All of those things are competing interests. And that's where most communities usually find the, the challenge, is to keep all of those, those constituencies happy. So I think if you're looking at a place where you're going to start to have, where the, where the process could maybe fall apart is when you have those competing interests and those competing factors saying, well, my, my project is really important, well, my project is really important, well, my, you know. So you have to be able to draw all those people into the same place and really have interesting conversations about what can be done. So I would look at bringing in all, you know, obviously the school department, your public safety, conservation, all of that, maybe create sort of a, well, I would call it like an overseeing board or a committee that kind of tackles all those issues up front.
Public service in a municipality, which is great to have that level of experience. But I think it's also important for me, and I think this is probably what sets me apart, is to have both the public and private sector background that I can bring to the table to help create solutions and solve problems.
There's a natural tension between owning the day-to-day operations of the town as the town administrator and deferring to the priorities, guidance, and direction of the Board of Selectmen. Please tell us how you would approach this and provide any examples you can of how you've navigated a similar dynamic in the past.
Well, I've worked for two different boards, large boards of 25 and 35, so I'm used to hearing a lot of divergent opinions. And I think that the town administrator's role is similar to the role of a CEO of a Chamber of Commerce in that you're really there to guide and to help implement decisions. You don't set the policy, you don't set the tone, you just try to flesh out all of the different sides of a problem or an argument or a decision that needs to be made. And I think if you have someone in this role that really understands that, I think that's really important. So for me, that's a very clear delineation. My role isn't to take over and say, here's what you should do. My role is to say, here are all the things that you can consider in coming to a decision. My role is to try to take direction from you as to what you need to find out for information and certainly happy to attend things and be the face of the town when it's necessary, but understand that my role is really secondary to the Board of Selectmen. And that's, I work at the pleasure of the board, so I don't, so I've had experience working at the pleasure of several boards, so I think I have a pretty clear understanding of how working with boards can be.
I guess my follow-up on that would be, you know, all of that given, there are still a lot of things day-to-day. The board meets by, you know, two times a month. You obviously have access to members of the board in the interim. But, you know, there's not necessarily the space where on any given decision that's going to come across the desk of the town administrator, there'll be the ability to kind of convene and canvas the board for opinions and viewpoints. So I think that's kind of a bit where this question's trying to get to is like sort of how do you navigate that piece of that where, yes, you're at the pleasure of the board, you're a town administrator, not a mayor. But at the same time, you have a very significant government and employees that are turning to you on a hourly basis sometimes for guidance.
So I would say that I'm collegial in my style of governing in that I try to find out what the varying opinions are and craft the best solution, but I'm certainly not afraid to make a decision when I need to. And I certainly, I think, am very, have made very good decisions in my former roles when they were called for. For example, when I was town clerk, it became very clear to me that the public really wanted longer hours. And at the time, no one in Town Hall seemed really happy about that concept. However, I thought it was really important to offer additional services to the townspeople, so I opened my office on Saturday mornings and I opened my office on Monday evenings. And that was something that had never been done. And a lot of people said to me, you're going to make a lot of enemies here if you do that because nobody wants to do those Saturday morning hours. But for me, I knew that was what the public wanted, so I did it. And it turned out to be a great decision and the people in the town were very well-served by that. So I'm not afraid to make some hard decisions, to make those tough calls, have been doing that for about 20 years.
I have one, but I'm going to keep it to seven because I think it's related to that question as well.
So Maynard as a community has an admittedly high tax base, and our size limits our new growth potential. These factors, as well as the constant reduction in state funding, contribute to an annual struggle to retain full services while balancing our budget. What financial strategies would you employ to retain high service levels while maintaining a balanced budget?
Well, I think that in every community I have ever worked in, people are concerned about the tax rate, so that is not at all a new problem. I think looking for new sources of revenue. I know that you are limited in size, but you do have some really unique opportunities that you can grow your commercial tax base. I think that you have a split tax rate here. I think that the board or the assessor would probably look at how that split is currently, what it's currently generating for income and see how much additional revenue is needed that we might be able to attract more commercial taxpayers, basically. I think that would be the number-one strategy is to try to get more economic development into the community. You have a lot of great resources here, you have this building that is already built that can be populated with lots of different businesses, and I think that would be one, a number-one strategy. Of course, a number of other strategies could be employed. I think certainly looking at where the expenditures are, where is there any place that, you know, could be fine-tuned or cut for spending? Maybe there's duplicative effort that's going on in a number of areas, so are there places that, so I would look at where the places are to sort of cut spending if that's possible. But I think really trying to bring in new sources of revenue is probably the number-one piece of the economic pie.
What would you see as your role as town administrator in working towards getting these businesses? You mentioned the mill a couple of times. What would you see as your role in trying to attract business to Maynard?
Well, I know you have an Economic Development Committee, and I'm sure they're really working hard to promote and to encourage business to come here. But I do have a lot of experience in economic development at the state level, certainly have a lot of folks that I'm still, you know, have relationships with. Mass Econ, I've been involved with them, certainly know how to, I don't know if you have CoStar here, but that would be something I would think about, you know, is there a way to make Maynard more visible? And when I was at the Metro West Chamber, I developed a program called Municipal Magnet to address this particular problem. So to get communities to really start to think like CEOs. And we would go through this process with the community to say, okay, where are your assets and where are your liabilities? You know, for you, I mean, you're not going to be purchasing any more land, you're not going to add 50 more acres to your town. So that would be seen as, you know, a sort of a hard and fast, you have this much space and that's it. And you have a lot of open space here, so that is really great because it's a great marketing tool. So I'd look at, how do you market Maynard? What is being done currently? What could be better done to make sure that the right people, the commercial, you know, all of the commercial brokers, maybe do a fam tour, a familiarization tour, have them come in, see what you have available here, and really try to get more and more interest from outside the region, outside the state, as well as within the state. I know that many towns offer tax-instrumental financing, that might be something you'd look at if you really wanted to attract a large-scale player. And this Municipal Magnet program that I've employed in other communities has really helped communities look at what they have in place that will attract business and what they need to do to make sure that business will come. So you're very close to a train station, you're probably, I don't know, eight or 10, not even, maybe eight minutes from the Acton train station. That's a real selling point for businesses who want to get their workers to come here. So those are the kinds of things I would take a look at, you know, to really try to promote economic development.
So recently, the Board of Selectmen unveiled a strategy for a more disciplined approach to budgeting and financial planning that would help us set aside money for capital projects and which will require a high degree of discipline and restraint in the face of budgetary needs and asks. Do you have thoughts on this proposed strategy? Some of the challenges the town might face in maintaining the approach and how you might navigate the process? There's a follow-up component to that around who might you invite into the process, such as the schools, other departments, et cetera?
As in many communities, I'm sure it's probably similar in Maynard, the school budget is a big portion of the overall budget for the town and is a big piece of that economic puzzle, right? How do you, how do you continue to fund your excellent school system? How do you continue to offer superior police and fire? All of those things are competing interests. And that's where most communities usually find the challenge, is to keep all of those constituencies happy. So I think if you're looking at a place where you're going to start to have, where the process could maybe fall apart, is when you have those competing interests and those competing factors saying, well, my, my project is really important, well, my project is really important, well, my, you know. So you have to be able to draw all those people into the same place and really have interesting conversations about what can be done. So I would look at bringing in all, you know, obviously the school department, your public safety, conservation, all of the, maybe create sort of a, well, I would call it like an overseeing board or a committee that kind of tackles all those issues up front, so it doesn't get to town meeting and then you have an unknown outcome. You want to try to bring in as many people as you can on the process up front so that you will have the right outcome to bring to town meeting.
I'm sorry, I got a question. So give me an example of how you would lead such a team. Say the committee's there, you know, your role in this, you have public safety officers, you have the school department, you have the Department of Public Works, you have whatever else. How do you lead them in this budget process or this planning process with competing interests for the good of the town?
So I think you've stated something really important, what is for the good of the town, right? And it's, that's getting to the heart of the question. What might be good for the town in one person's eyes may not be the best interest by someone else's viewpoint. So I would bring everybody into a room before the budget process starts and say, here's the financial picture, here's where we're at, here's what, you know, we've set the tax rate last year, but we know if we're going to grow this budget at all, we're going to have to do X, Y, and Z. And who's willing to give up something and who's willing to say, well, this can wait a little bit? You know, maybe some of those capital projects have to be done right away, maybe they can wait another six months. And to really pull people in so that everybody can understand it's not just that one department or one division, but everybody's needs have to have a full vetting and a full weighing so that they can convince one another of what the needs are and how to best approach them. I think if we take a top-down approach and say, well, this person's, you know, right and this division's getting this and this committee should have that, I think we have less opportunity for success. So I think if you get everybody in the room in the first place, before the budget, really the budget starts getting debated, before you send out all those budget sheets and say, have at it, have everybody sit in a room together and say, okay, this is what, the amount of money we have to work with. And if we're going to ask for these other things, how do you think we're going to best fund those? So that everybody has a clear understanding that it's really on the back of the taxpayers that you're doing it, right? It's not, this is not an endless supply of money. And you are beholden to the taxpayers, and I'm sure at town meeting every year, residents that get up and say, you know, my tax rate is too high. So we have to be really mindful of that. And one way to do that is to pull everybody together in advance.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question, I think the first piece of it, you've already answered, and the first piece of it was, what is your experience with economic development? But the second piece goes on to ask, could you describe for us the most important planning initiative that you participated in over the course of your career? What was your role in the planning process and can you describe any keys to the success of the project?
So I sat on the governor's Economic Development Planning Council for this Commonwealth. And I served under two governors, under Governor Patrick and under Governor Baker. And that council or that committee is responsible and has been responsible for setting the economic development agenda for the Commonwealth. So for the past six years, the Commonwealth has worked under a strategic plan that I sat on. My role, one of my roles in that committee was to really understand workforce development, how to promote workforce growth, how to retain our workers here in Massachusetts. But also, we talked a lot about what was coming down the pipe, what are the new technologies that we're going to need to employ? How are we going to attract more, you know, we have a very, we are very fortunate here in Massachusetts that we have a very strong public and private education model. But that was falling short at the state level for state colleges and universities. So the funding stream, we started to take a look at that picture and say, okay, how can we do a better job of pulling people into that arena? Because what we were seeing was a lot of graduates would come here, get their education, and they would leave. And so we were losing more and more workforce. So we took a very solid look at that. All of the other areas of economic development that committee and I was a part of was responsible for formulating those policies that are still in play, things like how do you, how do you encourage growth in communities? Many of the Baker administration's current, they have, you know, the infrastructure grants, I think you've received a Mass Works grant recently, that was started on the Baker, under the Patrick administration, that whole process of Mass Work Grants. I was also involved with many of those efforts when I was working for the state. So sitting on the Economic Development Planning Council, I had a unique opportunity to really look, hear businesses' point-of-view represented here, academia's point-of-view represented here, government's point-of-views represented. And we crafted a plan that is still in use today and is being used all over the state to promote economic development in areas that are even much, you know, that are much more greatly challenged than Maynard and have much more significant problems to overcome. So you have a good place to start from, but I think that experience working on the Economic Development Planning Council would really be a very important piece of how my economic development framework is, has been set in place.
You want to do seven times?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. So the question is for number seven is, could you describe for us both your managerial style and your organizational strategy? Considering your response to these questions, what town government issues would you delegate and to whom? In addition, my question for seven is really is, can you also elaborate on your experience in direct management now or in the past? Do you have experience managing? And if so, do you have experienced, second-level experience managing leaders as well as direct?
So, let me see if I can remember all the parts of this committee.
I can refer you to a guy, no worries.
So as you all know from reading my resume, I have not been a town administrator, but I certainly have managed teams in many different roles. Obviously, when I was town clerk, I managed the town clerk's office, which is a municipal office, worked with in-town government, worked with many, many volunteers. The town clerk's office has many people that come in and help out. So have worked with large teams of people, certainly on elections and running elections and voting process and all of that, town meeting. We have a lot of volunteers that come in and help out with that. So in addition to the staff that I was mentoring and the staff that I was managing, there were these large pools of volunteers that I would work with. Same was true of all of the jobs that I've had, both at the chambers, certainly at, when I was at the state, I worked with lots of different leaders. I have worked with many C-suite executives over the years on boards as well as commissions and maybe not managed them, but certainly have helped craft consensus among them when problems have come up. So I have a lot of experience with relationship management, and I would say that's probably one of my core competencies. Can you repeat the question?
Chris, you know, second question of that whole thing was, considering your response to these questions, what town government issues would you delegate and to whom? And I may have to follow up on that as well.
So I know that you have an assistant town administrator, which I am guessing the town administrator relies on strongly for certain things. I would probably not delegate things like personnel management or human resource issues or collective bargaining necessarily. I think those would be things that I would want to really be involved with myself. But I think some of the day-to-day operational questions, things that come up, you know, that, problems within the building, problems within the computer system, those would be things that I would look to, not outsource, but look to have people who are maybe more skilled at, I certainly don't have the IT background to go and fix a computer, but I would probably delegate some of those responsibilities. But I'm a pretty hands-on, you asked me what kind of a leader I am, I'm a pretty hands-on leader. I certainly can delegate, but I would have to really take a look. I would say the first thing I would come in and do is sort of a 360, take a look around and see, okay, where are the, where's everything currently being managed? Who's currently managing all these components? And then figure out which ones are in my best skill set and which ones would be needing to be delegated. But certainly things like IT would be certainly an area, maybe some of the accounting functions, I'm sure your town accountant is handling everything great, but I'd probably want to take a look at how all of that process is enacted.
If I could just, I just want to, oh, sorry.
Just a follow-up, if you wouldn't mind. I'm just, I did, what I did adhere in that was, yes, you do have your direct managerial experience.
Yes.
Performance review.
Oh, yes, I've done all of that. Oh, yes, yes. So I've managed a number of staffs, both at the chamber and at the town clerk, but I haven't been a, haven't managed, as a town administrator, I haven't managed staff.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
And actually, no, no, it's on the same point, which is, I'm still just lacking a little bit of understanding. So what were the size of the teams that you had direct managerial authority?
So when I was town clerk, I had a staff of three. When I was at the Neshoba Chamber, I had a staff of three. When I was at the Metro West Chamber, a staff of four.
Thank you.
And as you might guess, there were many volunteer committees that I would work with that needed a lot of management.
So we know, number eight, we know the answer already, but the question was, does your work history contain any experience with town meeting form of government? And if so, please explain. I think the please explain is, you know, David followed up with the last app, and the question, his follow-up was, you know, what's your, more or less, what's your opinion of the town meeting form of government as opposed to other forms of government used in the state and in this region?
So I like the open town meeting form of government because I think it's the most direct, although it's a very time-consuming form of government, it's the most direct way to obtain the citizen's point of view. And I like the fact that you can go to town meeting and actually hear what your citizens, what their concerns are, what the things that you're doing right, the things that they enjoy about the town, the things that they think could be done better. I think that's an important part of the process that's largely lost in communities. So yes, I have worked, obviously, in town, open town meeting form of government, I'm pretty well-acquainted with it, having been the clerk, so I, you know, not only had to take the official minutes of the town and had to, you know, certify the vote of the town and correspond with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, all of those things, but also understand the warrant process, understand the management of that whole process of getting to the place of town meeting, which encompasses many different steps by the Board of Selectmen and encompasses many different reporting that you have to do. In the Town of Groton, we, in advance of town meeting, we have to publish sort of the selectmen's point of view. Selectmen's, you know, whether they think this is a good idea or not, don't know if you do that here, but that was one of the steps that we would have to take when I was town clerk, is to make sure that the public really knew, you know, where the selectmen stood on each issue. So there was a lot of debate and process even ahead of town meeting. So I'm pretty familiar with the town, open town meeting process.
Can I follow on tonight, Chris, real quick? Just, I know you, but my, just begs to, so specific to your experience in the Town of Groton, what was your interaction with a finance committee? And how is the finance committee, I'm assuming it's appointed the same way in the Town of Groton as it is Town of Maynard, and how did you interact? Well, how did you see the interaction with the town administrator from a finance committee standpoint?
So the way it worked in Groton, and maybe it works the same way here, the town administrator would meet with the town accountant and the finance committee. And together, they would develop a budget. And then the town administrator would distribute all of those components of the budget to department heads, which I was, of course, one of. And then we would all sit down individually with, after we worked out our budget, we would sit down with the FinCom and decide, you know, okay, this is going to stay, this is going to go, no, you can't have this, yes, you can't have that. If you really want it, you have to fight it for it at town meeting. So there was a lot of give and take with the FinCom. We had a very active FinCom that, a very active and very, I would say, very skilled FinCom. So we were really lucky because these were people who really understood numbers and really understood how to develop a budget.
The reason I ask is because you took the time to explain that you had to jot down what the Board of Selectmen's opinions on things were. In Maynard, oftentimes, we're really interested in what the FinCom recommendations are at town meetings.
Yeah, both would have to be published, both Board of Selectmen and FinCom. We have to, we'd have to have that ahead of town meeting for our voters.
Thank you.
So a follow-up to that, so do you think that the finance committee's role from vis-à-vis the town administrator is extremely interactive and as opposed to a, an advisory committee for the purpose of town meeting? So how do you see the role of finance committee in a community like Maynard or Groton?
I think, in Groton, I think that the, I think the FinCom has a certain level of power, but I think it's pretty well-balanced with the, with the town administrator and the town accountant.
Are they volunteer in Groton?
Yes.
Not elected?
No, they're all volunteer.
Volunteer in Maynard as well?
Yeah, they're appointed by the board, so.
And ours is appointed by the moderator.
Yeah, yeah. So I think a balance of that would be something that I would like to see is, you know, that there's some equal weight given to both sides of the coin, that it's not the FinCom says this and you're going to do it, but that there's a give and take. Because I think the FinCom, they have a lot of responsibility and there's a lot to look at in the budget. It's not just one department. So I think, at least in Groton, you know, they would call every department head in and you'd have to defend your budget. And they knew what they were talking about, they really were studying the budget. So, and year over year, many people would be on that committee for, I mean, on that, yeah, committee for, you know, five, six, eight years. So they had a lot of institutional knowledge.
You want to follow up to number eight? Okay. The next question is, do you have any prior experience negotiating collective bargaining agreements? And if so, how do you perceive the relationship between labor and management? And how does the perception help, how does your perception help to attain the best agreement for all parties?
So I've not worked on a collective bargaining agreement directly, but I have been, had input to a number of discussions about collective bargaining when I was town clerk in terms of what the employees' points of view might be versus the management's point of view. So I have an understanding of that, but I've not actually created a collective bargaining agreement.
What do you think would be the best strategy or tools to implement to help you overcome the challenge of not having that experience if you were to assume the role of town administrator?
Well, I think I would want to sit through one session before I would really know what I think might need to be fine-tuned. It's, would be hard for me to guess at that. But I'm the kind of person who always believes that there's room for compromise, and I think that the best decisions for town usually come when everybody gets some of what they need and not one person gets all of what they need. So I think from the public's point of view, they want town employees to be treated fairly, and I think town employees want to be treated fairly, but there is a budgetary concern that comes into play there. And so it's striking that balance. And I think negotiating, any kind of negotiation is a fine art, and I have negotiated many other things, but not a collective bargaining agreement.
Do you, anybody else okay with the question? I just have one little follow-up to it. So how do you perceive yourself, what's your perception of the relationship between labor, labor unions and management? Maybe not just in Maynard, just in general? Do you have a conventional wisdom that you subscribe to with regards to?
Well, I think that there is a lot of value in listening to what people have to say. And so when you have a union, you're getting a point of view that you might not subscribe to yourself. So I think there's value in understanding the union point of view. I think when you're management, you know, we, traditionally in America, you know, there's been this struggle between management and labor. But I think that that is lessening in today's world. I think people have come to expect that you have, it takes a long time to work out an agreement that's going to be right and just and fair to everybody. So I would say that I am open to negotiating and I am open to hearing a lot of different points of view, but I certainly think it's important also to be very fiscally responsible. And so it's striking that balance between being fiscally responsible and being as fair as you possibly can, given those constraints.
Would it be fair to say that you would be, would you be in favor or not in favor based on your statement of precedents that are already set in form of contracts? Or would you be looking at the contract for what's you feel is right with what's happening today in the town?
Without seeing what the contracts are, it's hard to say, but I always think that there's, it's good to review things and look and say, okay, is this, is this benefit or is this, I'll give you a specific example. I know health insurance is a really big question for municipalities. And I know that a lot of communities want to go back to their employees and say, you know, we're going to make the contributory portion 15% instead of 10% or 20% instead of 15%. And that causes a lot of anxiety. But I think it is important, given the current fiscal situation that most towns face, to at least look at those options. Understanding that when a benefit has been received for many years, it's really hard then to change that. So I would be open to being, to taking a look at those things. I don't, I'm not afraid. I don't, I'm not afraid to take a look at those things. I'm not saying, oh, I, no, it's a sacred cow, we're not touching it. But by the same token, I think it's important that people understand you do have financial constraints. So is that?
Yes.
Clarify it?
Any others? Okay. The next question is, do you have any experience in obtaining grants from municipalities either through the state, federal government, or any other private funding source?
Well, I've successfully written a number of grants, but they were for philanthropic efforts, working with Habitat for Humanity and also, but I did have actually written a grant for, when I was at the Metro West Chamber of Commerce, and we were the first, we were the first Chamber of Commerce and the Commonwealth to become designated as a regional economic development organization. And for that, I received a grant award to create that municipal magnet program I spoke of earlier. So I definitely have grant writing experience, but did not write grant, well, I did write some very small grants when I was at the town of Groton, but nothing to, nothing to cheer about. They weren't big, large, hundreds of thousands of dollar type grants.
I have a brief follow-up. You had mentioned earlier when you were on the Governor's Economic Development Committee that you had been involved in structuring some of the grants and kind of creating some grants that are on the state level. Is that, can you elaborate a little on that?
The, that, that was when I worked for the state. So they got, the Economic Development Planning Council didn't create the vehicles for, like, mass work grants. But when I worked under the Patrick administration, the Mass Works Grant and a lot of the other grants, I can't think of some of their names at the moment, but some of those grants that were unveiled, there was a lot of input from regional folks like me because we would be out on the street collecting information from businesses, saying, this is what we really need. So for example, the Economic Development Incentive Program had a lot of fine-tuning while I was there. Given the feedback that we created, you know, all of the regional directors created this sort of pool of information saying, well, yeah, you can offer that, but the town is not going to use it. Or you can offer that, but the business community doesn't want that. Here's what they really want, you know? They, they want you to keep the advantage of building tax credit, or they want you to continue to support. Maybe the town doesn't want to be an economic development incentive community, but they will offer a local incentive. So those were the kinds of things that I had a lot of input into creating for the state on behalf of municipalities and the business community.
The next question is, improved communication with the Board of Selectmen, multiple department heads, and the citizens of Maynard in general have been a priority at the Board of Selectmen's annual goal-setting meetings for the past few years. If you saw communication as a shortcoming, how would you improve it?
Well, I'm a big fan of face-to-face meetings. And I use technology like everybody else, but I think a lot is lost in the translation. So I think if you are starting to have a problem with communicating, it's really important to actually have people in the same room talking to one another instead of just sending communications. So that would be something I would take a look at. I think if your communications to the public are the area that you're looking to, I don't know, improve, maybe you have some local forums and you invite the public in to talk about the issues ahead of a problem starting, right? So if, if you get the sense that people are not happy with the direction or a decision, rather than waiting until it becomes problematic, let's sit down and talk about what are the issues that are, are most concerning. So I think that face-to-face communication, for me personally, is very important. I think doing community outreach, engaging in a lot of discussion with your citizenry, I think that is very critical to maintaining good and open communication. I think it's important to use the tools that you have, you know, Twitter and Facebook and all of the social media opportunities, but there's, to me, there's nothing that beats that same old-fashioned face-to-face discussion with the citizenry.
Can I interrupt my transparency question? So I asked the first candidate the same question. So if you go to communication internally now, talking about transparency as well, not just to the public, but for the employees that you could, you know, you would be leader of. So what are your ideas on how do you foster transparency? How do you ensure that people are accountable and are actually reporting? Face-to-face meetings are good, but sometimes too many face-to-face meetings lead to lack of accountability.
Meeting fatigue.
And follow-up and everyone knowing what's been said, right? So how would you handle that situation and allow your folks that are underneath you to understand the expectations of them to be accountable as well?
I think it's really important to set goals and set expectations. So number one, I would probably have, I'm sure you already have, a department head meeting on a weekly basis or something similar to that, where you get the department heads in the room and you talk about the issues. And then you have an action plan. You have to develop an action plan. So you're probably already doing this. I've never sat in on any of your meetings, so I don't know that. But that would be something, if it's not in place, I would certainly put that in place to try to make sure that everybody knows. Because I think there's a lot of benefit and value in a department head meeting because everybody's hearing the information at the same time. So when I was at Devon's, you know, worked at Devon's for a little while doing community relations. And every week, we would have a, what, similar to a department head meeting, they didn't call it that. And it was really important because then everybody knew what the issues were all at the same time. And you would get ahead of the curve and start to talk about them. And then I'm a really big fan of giving people the authority and giving them the responsibility to do the job. But if they have a problem getting it done, finding out why it's not done, I'm a little bit of a taskmaster. I want to see progress. So I think discussion is good. I think it's really important to have those meetings and discussions, but I think you have to have action items that people are held to. And I'm not afraid to hold people to an action item. In terms of the public, I think the public, communications with the public or interactions with the public, I think a lot of that can be managed through email, but I still think that you're going to have people coming into town hall to talk to you about your, whatever things that are troubling them. I think that's always going to be the case.
Well, to that point then, if I may. So give me an example of what your policy would be. Would it be an open-door policy for the town or Maynard residents to come in and talk to whoever they want to? Or would there be some order that would have to be imposed? Or how do you, how do you envision that?
I believe that an open-door policy is a good thing. When I was a town clerk, that was one of the things that I campaigned on, was creating a gateway to the community so that everyone felt that they would, that they could participate in their government. That being said, everybody's time is valuable, and you can't just have people showing up at the police department to talk to the police chief, right? You can't just have people showing up at the superintendent's office to talk to the superintendent. I understand that. But I think that the town administrator plays a unique role in that you can be the buffer for a lot of those. So a lot of those issues can be brought to the town administrator's office to get a first hearing. And then if it needs to escalate to another level, then you can help that person get the, you know, assistance they need. So I do think an open-door policy is a very good thing for a town, and I think it's important for your citizenry to know that, to the people in your town to know that, hey, I can stop by my town administrator's office and I can let them know how I feel about that. I'm very open to that. I'm used to working with a lot of interruptions, so for me, that's not a problem, but.
Thank you.
A quick follow-up relative to your communication, how you would communicate with the board through not only our regular bi-weekly meetings, but what other, what style would you use to communicate with us about what's going on, what's important, what's not important? What do you tell us, what don't you tell us?
I would say that if I thought it was something really urgent, I would probably pick up the phone and call. If it were something less urgent, I would probably send an email. At the very least, I would send a weekly sort of recap of the main issues via email to you. I would probably, most likely, let you tell me what is the best method for you to get the information. Because everybody's different. Some people like to get a text, here's the problem. Some people like to get a full email outlining the, you know, the issue. So I would, I would take direction from the board as to how to best communicate, but at the very least, I would suggest that a weekly recap, in addition to here, here's the agenda for next Tuesday or whatever. I, I think it's important that on a weekly basis, you get some kind of an update. Here are the things that happened this week, and here are the things that you ought to be aware of. Because you're the ones that are going to get the call at Saturday morning at 9:30 saying, whatever, right? So.
If I could, I just want to actually go back to one of the early questions because I know we kind of hit you out of the gate with some of the big ones.
All right.
And I'd, I'd love to hear a little bit more from you about why, about your, your interest in moving into the space of being a town administrator, you know, sort of making that transition out of, you know, specifically the most of the nonprofit work that you've been doing lately.
Yep.
I know in your original answer, talked a lot about our town itself and kind of how it relates to your background, but I'm a bit curious about sort of like what's intriguing to you about making the investment and going down the path of municipal governance and town administration?
So I've always had an interest in government. I mean, my whole life, you know, as class president, you know, the whole thing. I always have had a really keen interest in town government. And for me, with all of the different things that I've done, I think I have an opportunity. So a lot of people have said to me over the years, you know, did you ever think of becoming a town administrator? But, you know, I was in other roles that I really enjoyed, and I thought, well, maybe someday. And now that someday has come for me, right? Now I've got all of the skill sets. I don't have the direct town administrative experience, but I have all of the skill sets that I think I would need to be successful in this role. I think this role presents enough challenge for me. I like to be challenged. I think it presents enough of that community piece that is really important to me. I like to be involved with the local folks. I like to be at different events that are, where things are happening for a community. So that is something that really appeals to me. So when I look at all the roles in town government, that's the role I think, you know, could I go back to being a town clerk? Yeah, I could do that. I think I would probably be successful, and there are probably other roles that I would really like to. But I think the town administrator role, given that it has the ability to help shape decisions, the ability to really make a difference in a community, is what appeals to me.
Thank you.
Yep.
So for the business end of it, so is there one thing you could tell us about yourself that we would not know by reading your resume or taking part in this interview that you'd like us to know?
You phrased it before too by saying like, what would be like one fun Google fact? If Google, if Google knew everything about you.
Well, you probably would never know this about me, but I play the accordion. So the reason I tell you that is because that is not a popular instrument. And so I think that says something about my personality, that I'm not afraid to, to have people sort of say, why are you doing that? Because if I am.
You have a little monkey with you?
I don't have the monkey, but I could probably invest in one of those. So I, I mean, I love music, I sung professionally, but the thing about playing the accordion usually shocks people because that's not a very common thing.
Not typical, yeah.
And you probably would never see that anywhere else about me.
Very cool, thank you.
Okay. So just in closing, is there, you know, if you want to make a closing statement or anything, you're interested in letting us know, or any questions for us that you'd like to ask, this would be the time.
I, I'm just curious to know why each of you wanted to be a selectman in this town. Kind of just like a quick answer, because I'm very curious about how people view their role here. Let's start with Melissa.
I was very involved with the Economic Development Committee, and I'm a business owner in town, so I wanted to get more involved and see what we could do to kind of propel the town forward.
Okay, good.
I thought there were some major challenges facing the town, and I had been following them, and I thought I could lend a hand and push things along.
Good.
He just wanted to make it.
He's got to read his prepared.
Do you want us to come back to you, Chris?
No, no, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't watch it, no. No, I got involved because at the time I got involved, there was a void of a couple of selectmen that had left the board, and there was all sorts of conversations of why that took place. So a couple of people said to me, you should find out what's going on. So finding out what's going on led me to throw my hat in the ring, so to speak, and that's really why. And then, you know, the, the other part of it too is, you know, you hope to, when you get out of this chair, you hope that the town you left is even better than the town you, when you came. So that's, you know, that's a goal, to leave here with a town in Maynard in a better place than it was when I got here.
Good to hear that.
Much like yourself, like I grew up in a family that was much service-oriented, and you know, I learned at a young age that giving back to one's community is important. So from the time that I established myself and my family in Maynard, I wanted to get involved. I got involved with the finance committee and learned a little bit about the process here in Maynard and whatever. And then just became, it became something that I thought I should do. And I really like helping people. I like finding solutions to problems. I like trying to improve our community as much as we possibly can. I love our community. I love the people that I get the chance to meet that I never otherwise would have gotten the opportunity to meet. And overall, the experience for me has been one of the, if not the, best experience of my life.
That's great to hear.
So very happy to have been here and continue to be here. And so for me, it's, it's just, you know, it's fun. I find it to be fun and, you know, frustrating at times, but fun.
That's great.
For me, it was about an, an opportunity to give back. I'm born and brought up in Maynard. I went through all of my schooling here in town and really credit the experience of growing up in this town as having led me to some pretty amazing opportunities and experiences around the world. And when I unexpectedly had the opportunity to move back here, my focus was really on how could I best give back to the town? And, yeah, so that's what led me to, to run and, and to be part of it. And as Chris said, you know, sort of what about my background and experience could I kind of bring to the table and bring to the board to, to help move the town forward?
Yeah, that's terrific. So I guess in closing, I would say that, like you, I think it's really important to be involved. And I think it's really important for citizens to know that their government is really there to help them. I used to joke when I was at the state and say, well, I'm, I'm from the state and I'm here to help you, right? Like, that has kind of a negative connotation when you say that. But it is really important for the local government that serves its, its community to have that give and take. And I see that here, and it's, it's a refreshing thing. And so I think I would love to come and work in a place like this where a board respects all of the people in the community and respects the people that work in the building to do the work that they can't be doing because they have their own other jobs. But your job is to really set the agenda and the tone and to really listen to the community. And then I can help translate that and make those things happen, those goals and initiatives. So I would be very excited to be able to come here and help you do that and do this work together. I think I have a great background. I hope you will give me the chance to prove that I can do this job to everybody's satisfaction. And more importantly, I think I would really enjoy working in this community and with each of you. So thanks for your time tonight, and good luck with the rest of the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking about us.
Always very interesting to hear why people do that. Public services, not.